I'm open to questions or discussion on any of those.
Council members, do you have questions, comments, reactions, thoughts to the proposals by Mrs. Hiller? Or you need to think about them a while? Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Karen, you had said that there was quite an increase on residents outside the city, and I'm not finding those numbers. How do we know how much is being raised on rural county instead of the city?
I think we might refer that to Mr. Gerber, if that's all right. The source of all information.
Is your question, what amount of revenue do we raise from out of the city, or what the formula is for both?
And the increases. There was a comment that they were having quite an increase, and I know there was an editorial today that it could be increased on the rural county residents rather than the city residents.
Our out-of-city service is, and you have to distinguish between our wholesale customers and our retail customers. Wholesale customers are governed by contracts, so that's, those rates are locked in contractually.
And are those generally the rural water districts?
I would say generally, yes.
Okay, which is, I think that helps, we are more familiar. The rural water districts, we have contracts with.
For example, we have an industrial customer outside of the city, and their rate is set at 175% of, I believe, the residential rate of the inside city. Okay, thank you. It's set at 175% of the inside-city rate of whatever class they're in. So in that particular case, it's 175% of this inside-the-city residential rate, industrial rate.
And their increases will be the same as for within the city? I think that was the question, like, how much are their rates increasing compared to those that were increasing in the city?
Mr. Mayor, it would be a proportional increase.
And the final question, the rural water districts that we have contracts with, how often are those renewed, and what is the rate set at with those contracts?
I don't know those contracts off the top of my head, but I know we have some folks in the audience who can speak to those.
Very quick.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Schwartz, I would feel a little uncomfortable. We probably don't have all that information sitting here today. We can pull together. There are several contracts, they all have different starting and ending dates and terms. So we will prepare and provide a report on that for you, for this body.
Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Hiller.
This sheet, the ones that we got handed out at first, it's a single sheet, there was one for water, one for wastewater. The top half was local, and the bottom half was outside the city on those stock sheets that we started with. So if you find those, you'll have it. They do go up substantially more. They start out higher than the inside-city rates, and they increase higher than...
If I may, Mr. Mayor, it's a proportional increase. So if, as an industrial customer in the city, you pay $2.25 per thousand gallons, the rate for an industrial customer outside of the city is 175% of that rate.
And it'll go up 6% next year?
Yes, both on the volume and the meter charge.
Right.
Mayor, an example of the difference would be that the single-family residential rate inside the city is currently $3.58, or maybe ignoring this year because they're so different with the way it's calculated. For 2015 is $3.79. For a single-family residential outside the city is $6.65 per thousand gallons. And by 2017, in the staff proposal, the single-family residential inside the city is for $18 per thousand gallons, and for outside the city is $7.33 per thousand gallons. Pretty different.
But of course, they could always choose to be annexed into the city and therefore not have to pay the 175% more. Councilman Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Doug, I want to take you back to this document that you handed out and discussed at the outset of your remarks. I want to refer you to the second column, the commercial side, the second box under Commercial 2015 Gallons. You have examples for a $1,000 gallon consumer, 415,000 gallon consumer, and a 4.15 million gallon consumer. If you look to the meter charge, there are three meter charges listed. The first one is 9.83, which is, I'm assuming, a one-inch or below meter. The second number for the 415,000 gallon usage is $62.90. I don't find that on the one, below one inch, 1.5 inch, two inch, three inch, or four inch. Where did you come up with the $62.90? Is that a 3.5 inch? I don't know.
Mr. Harmon, those examples are based on actual customers that have different-sized meters and different numbers of meters? And so, for example, in that particular case, it's based on a commercial customer that has a four-inch and a six-inch or something. That's not right, but it's based on an actual example of a customer, if that makes sense. So it's based on their two meters added together to get that meter charge, or their three meters, or whatever the example is.
Okay, the same rationale then on the next meter charge of $235.84. That's a combination of various meters that that particular customer had.
Yes, that's the aggregate. I didn't show the math, but for example, on the 415,000 gallon user, that is a user with two two-inch meters.
Oh.
The four-million-gallon user, it's four three-inch meters.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I was afraid it would be more confusing if I showed those individually, so I just did the aggregate.
That's fine.
I think, and along with that information that I found interesting is that on the information it shows, we have 26 industrial accounts. However, we only have eight industries in that because they have many meters.
Run that by me again.
Our information where it shows how many accounts at each of the levels, it states, we have 26 at the industrial level, we have 26, and actually, that's 26 meters for eight industries, because I think one industry has 13 meters. So that, you know, as we get more down in the bushes, we keep finding out more of this information, it's hard to be on top of. There's just so many different things to look at, it is a challenge. Okay, we have a final opportunity here. Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, when we were talking, and you were going over the rate increases with individual council members in your office, I asked how much this was going to generate a year, the rate increases, and you said about $2 million a year. Is that still what these rate increases would generate?
That's correct, Councilwoman Schwartz. Both the proposal that the city staff has put forward, and also Councilman Brown's proposal, generate in water approximately $2 million a year.
Thank you.
And wastewater, the increase would be?
Wastewater is a little bit less than $2 million. It varies by year. It's 1.7 or 1.8 million.
So combined, a little under $4 million between the two.
And it's cumulative, in that it's $2 million a year. So by the time you get to the end of water, it's up five, and whatever it is on wastewater.
Any other questions, concerns, issues? Councilman Harmon?
I didn't mean to be continually beating the proverbial dead horse here, but Doug, can you, and I don't expect an answer right now, but it appears that we have meter sizes ranging from below one inch up to 10-inch.
That's correct.
Okay. How do those meter sizes fall across single-family, multifamily, commercial, industrial, and irrigation? Is that something you can provide?
I can tell you generally that the average residential customer has a meter that is 5 eighths or less than an inch.
For single-family?
Generally speaking, yes. There's exceptions to every rule, of course, but generally speaking, inside-the-city limits, we have, you know, 44,671 inch and below meters, and that approximately corresponds to single-family and multifamily.
Single-family and multifamily? Is that what you said?
Yes, that's typically the size you'll see with those types of customers.
Okay.
And then with commercial, it really just depends on the type of operation. Some commercial operations are going to have a small meter size, you know, 5 eighths or less than an inch meter. Some, you know, in the examples that I handed out tonight, will have four three-inch meters or two two-inch. It just, it really varies by their particular need. So you can't, again, you can't say there's an average size for those types of accounts.
Okay. Thank you.
Just another interesting question along that line. Do we determine, is that pretty much a standard of, is there code that we follow? Or is it up pretty much to that commercial-industrial entity, what size and how many meters they have, or that's worked out between the department and the new construction process? The city manager?
Yeah, Your Honor, if I could just answer. Generally, it's based on need. That would be part of the engineering of the facility. There would be certain code issues in terms of all of that, but generally, when the project is brought forward, it follows the standard requirements based on the need of the facility.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone has? Coming down to an end on this discussion item. Councilman?
I have just one more question. What's the rate that we're currently replacing lines at? And with the current, I think it's the $2 million a year that we have in the replacement program, how many lines are we replacing? And what's our capacity if we were to increase funding to that program? Or, I mean, can we do 10 miles a year? Can we do two miles a year? Or do we know?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, if you get that question, understand.
I'd like to ask Mr. Whitaker to address that in terms of the plan that we're bringing forward. What you're requesting is what would our capacity for line replacement be under that budget?
Correct. And sort of asking too, what size of lines do we typically replace? I thought you heard that.
That would be fine, too. If you want to answer that also.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schmidt, I don't know if I have, you know, the exact, I'd have to get you, you know, because, yeah, there are various sized lines out there that we're replacing. I think rule of thumb is, I think we said $6 million would replace roughly, you know, seven to eight, you know, 100 feet of line, excuse me, miles of line. Let me get the right terms. So that would be, you know, just a general, you know, from that, again, it would depend. We've got, you know, 12-inch, eight-inch lines up to, you know, 24 and larger. So it would vary depending on those, you know, that line size, and also the conditions of installing the line, you know, how deep is it, et cetera, when we're replacing.
Just to follow, and I understand that it's kind of, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, we obviously have a problem in this city with water lines breaking, and it's something that we, you know, want to address, because it's going to save us a lot of money in the long run if we can, if we can address that. And I guess I'm curious, you know, if we tried to go out and repave half of the city, the cost of contracting that out would jump by a lot, because we don't have the capacity to do that. I'm kind of trying to get at, you know, what's a good rate where we don't start shooting ourselves in the foot by, you know, not being able to contract this work out at a reasonable cost? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure I'm following on the question.
If we were to give you $10 million a year to replace water lines, would you be able to do that? Or would we be above the ability to replace at that rate, or 100 million, or whatever?
When we were looking at, you know, we were looking at the 800 and some miles that we have, and we were looking at a 100-year replacement, which would be eight miles a year, so that's six to eight. Could we get up to, you know, if you gave us $10 million, we, you know, we could probably handle that. Yeah, to go to 100 million, no. We'd have the whole city tore up, and nobody would be able to move, you know, from that standpoint. Plus, we would probably overextend our contractors, kind of the same thing we found with road construction. Did we get too much in 13 going? We backed off some this year so that we didn't have as much tore up. So those would be, again, where those lines are, et cetera. But, you know, I see if that answers your question, is, I think, you know, in that six, if you gave us, you know, if we had $10 million, could we handle that much? I would say probably yes, you know, from that standpoint. But we don't want, I don't, if we went more than that, if we were talking just line replacement, obviously, other issues within the plants can be eight, nine, 10, you know, 12 million-dollar projects, and that would be a whole different ballgame when you start, you know, talking repairs at a plant.
And that's kind of what I'm looking for, is a target that we can, you know, so that we can do this as fast as we can, but as responsibly as we can, too. So thank you very much.
Are there other questions or comments from anyone? Mr. City Manager, would you want to, would you want to comment, close from our discussion this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're comfortable with the information that we're getting, and we will bring back to you a recommendation for direction and hopefully a favorable decision.
Thank you. All right, that completes our discussion items, our non-action items this evening, and we proceed to announcements. First, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any items today.
Okay. And we've had, we haven't met for a couple of weeks, but there have been a number of significant openings in the city. A lot is going on, and I know many of you will be probably commenting on those, but I want to just say today, KDOT, Kansas Department of Transportation, had their consult for this area, region of the state. There was a story this morning about the county and their proposal. This is, really, it's an important meeting because it provides the cities, counties, whatever, within this region to state their priorities from the perspective of requesting work from the Kansas Department of Transportation. The City of Topeka had two major areas. One is the Wanamaker-Arvonia area, where we are requesting a study, and also the possibility of a new exit of the turnpike on, between East Terminal and South Terminal that we have talked about before. So just some long-range plans, it's just very, we're making a request, but it's very long-range before they will, KDOT will look at all the different requests that are made, and perhaps sometime in the future, that we will hopeful that we will be receiving some action on those. We turn to Councilwoman Ortiz.
I'd just like to continue to thank people that have continually showed me love. It's kind of been overwhelming with the cards and stuff, but, you know, I was always taught to say thank you, so I wanted to continue to say that. Second, I wanted to say, I'm not a big K-State fan, but what the K-State family did for the Harwood family was awesome. Those young men got to, and his brother got to eat with the football players, the coach, and did the flipping of the coin, and I think that says a lot about not only our city, but our state. And I think that was just very, very awesome. So I kind of at work, you know, I kind of said that to them at work, and I've had a little purple around my cube, just, you know, I just think that's just really awesome. Those boys, I read on Facebook, they went to bed with their footballs, and they have bragging rights, and they do have bragging rights, and I think that's awesome. I, too, lost my father, and it's something that you don't get over very well, but are very fast, but it's something they'll cherish forever. Even the Royals, and go Royals. Billy Butler is one of my favorite players, believe it or not. He got a slide in there the other night. But anyway, even they got to go down there, and they got to throw the first pitch out. And again, that just speaks volume to our city and our state, and the people that have wrapped their loving arms around that family, and that continue to. And I just want to say that I acknowledge that, and I really think that's awesome, when we can do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And let me add, at the suggestion of Councilman Harmon, we sent a letter from the city to Coach Snyder and to the Athletic Department at Kansas State, thanking them for the recognition they provided to the Harwood family. Deputy Mayor, Mrs. Delisla. Councilman Man speaker, Councilwoman Schwartz.
Real quick, the Apple Festival at Ward Mead was this past weekend, and thank you to all the volunteers that helped, and also all the people that came out, and hopefully, if you didn't make it, you'll put it on your calendar for next year. And I went on the farm tour this past weekend, and it was delightful. I didn't make it out of the county to the other farms, but the Iwig Dairy is also holding an Oktoberfest, I think on the 18th. So if you haven't had an opportunity to go to one of our farms to do that. And then I would be remiss if I didn't mention, my neighbor, Jeanne Schuler, is with the Mulvane Arts Center, is having their big gala this coming weekend.
Councilman Schmidt, Councilman Harmon, Mrs. Hiller.
Oh my gosh, there's been a lot going on. I'll zip through it, but four of us went to Tulsa on the inner-city trip, and it was awesome. And there will be other highlights come out, I think, but in particular, the plans they have for development along their riverfront are phenomenal. But what was really cool about it to me was that they could very much break down into components. It was very manageable for anybody to put the kind of thought and creativity that they put into what's a pretty extensive riverfront project. Overall, the biggest thing that I got out of it was process. They had really engaged the citizens in the ideas and the development of Riverfront as an example, but other projects, and their young professionals are apparently the biggest and most active and engaged young professional association in the country. And rather, they not only do get involved in learning about things and having social events, but they actually get each other on boards and ask everybody what's happening, and what are they accomplishing, and have taken on civic issues themselves. And it was just impressive to see how engaged everyone was. We did stop in at their Makerspace as well and got a sense for how that's developing. We had a visit from a gentleman with the League of American Bicyclists last week. He was coming through, making stops in different cities. He was not really aware of that particular individual, how far along we were, and that we had applied and been awarded honorable mention status, but we got very good feedback. There were about eight people that met with him and rode parts of the city. So it was exciting to get that sort of positive visibility and feedback. Some of you have seen an announcement that I've put out. We, at this body, considered demolition on the East Topeka United Methodist Church about a year ago. That's gone through some changes and some efforts, only to talk to the people that they already knew maybe would be interested in the church. On Saturday, the Faith and Fellowship folks did post a legal in CJ Online and in the print paper, asking, offering the church for free for somebody to either move it or demolish it. So it's kind of last call, and if anybody knows, if anybody, there has been some interest this week. It's out on History Geeks and in a variety of networks, just to see if anybody would want to take it. The Historical Society would help with contacts with demolition folks, as well as techniques for how to move it, if somebody was able to do that. So I wanted to mention it here as well. Downtown Topeka, Inc. had their annual, their gala, which was their 50th anniversary last night. They did a fabulous job, had the Regency Ballroom packed, and had, as a speaker, a 30-year-old gentleman that everybody that went to Fargo, which didn't include me, but met at that visit, talking about what young people are doing, and how Fargo, a city very similar to us, has pulled itself around and is doing such fun things, much of which they're doing for nothing, which he kept pointing out, just people getting together and doing things, which is cool. St. Francis dedicated their emergency room this afternoon, and that's not only an $11 million investment, but also they stayed inside the city and are thriving there, having taken some time and modified their business plan, and it was really great to see all the support. Valeo, and these are all in District 1, but whatever, it's been a busy week or two. Valeo raised money and added, in addition to Valeo, out on the west end of the Topeka State Campus on Oakley. They call it internally, anyway, the residence. They found that they really needed a place where people who came in crisis could stay for a while, a couple of hours or maybe a couple of days. And they have 26 rooms, 10 doubles and six singles, and a tremendous setup to support that part of the tremendous need in our community. So wanted to share those various things, and then the mayor mentioned the KDOT planning this morning. We had a tremendous turnout of city and county folks, and some support from the chamber for that, so it was a good deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We have three persons who have indicated interest in public comment tonight. The first is Martha Weber. Is Martha Weber here? Okay, we will go, next we have Cindy Green.
I'm Cindy Green. I live at 4025 Southwest 28 Terrace. I'm one of the 13 houses involved in hoping to have this work out so that the Walgreens could be put there and kind of clean up the community. I've been raised, most of my life, a mile from where I live, and I have watched it deteriorate seriously. We do have an easement behind all those properties. I myself have tried to keep that, go behind those properties and get that cleaned out. Now, rocks, trash, everything's thrown back there. We have weeds 10 feet high that I can't keep up as a person, but with all the rentals, we don't seem to have anyone that really gets involved to help clean up this neighborhood. We have had some abandoned puppies left back there that we have rescued, and we continue to try to clean it up. So I'm hoping that something will happen, that this Walgreens thing will go through, kind of clean up this rental mess that has taken over that area. The inner part of the circle, we really have no problem, but with the children, I will be moving one way or another to raise my children where there's not police. You know, we're always having police coming around, and, you know, they're frightened. The children have been foster children that I have adopted, and that neighborhood has just gone downhill. So I just wanted to encourage you to seriously think of that vote next week, to clean up that corner. The rest of the area is a pretty nice area to live in. The school is not far from there, and it would be a great thing to clean up that corner. So I would appreciate any positiveness you can see in that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Green. And the city manager, I believe this is on the agenda for next week. We'll be hearing the first, the introduction of that. And it has been pointed out, on the information we had, it's Marshall Weber. Is Marshall Weber here? Okay, Marshall Barber.
Yeah, I'm here to speak in support of a project that you'll be considering next week, the same project that she was talking about, and to actually provide some further verification regarding her comments regarding the state of that corner. I went over there this morning and took some color photographs. of the structures that are presently on that corner, and are disseminating those for the good of the order. But I'm here to speak both as a Topeka citizen who's lived here for a really long time, and am always concerned with what's going on in our city. And I'm also speaking as a real estate agent who works, most of my business is actually in the city of Topeka, as opposed to all the glamorous McMansions on the outskirts of town. And I'm, I'm very interested in promoting continued development within the city. And I'm, I'm supporting this project, and I would ask you all to support it for a number of reasons as follows. First of all, I believe that the overall mental and emotional well-being of the community will benefit from the presence of a new brightly lit commercial structure in one of the more established, older portions of town. And it is on the near west side. We do have, in that area, a lot of aging structures that are not being particularly well-maintained, both commercial and residential, and this would represent a good turnabout from that. The Planning Commission recently was in the newspaper as also expressing an interest in as much new development within the city limits as possible, bringing in new housing and so forth. And this would be consistent with those objectives. The project will, will improve the neighborhood residential and commercial values by removing the unsightly structures, which have been caught up for several years in, in kind of a death spiral of declining tenant quality. The traffic on the corner makes it more difficult to attract good tenants in the first place. And so the landlords, it's, it's really not a, a comment on a lot of these landlords, but they find it uneconomic, really, to continue to invest in these properties, and so the spiral continues from there. There's a friend of mine who lives over there, and she was telling me that quite recently, they had a big disturbance down on Gage Boulevard, fairly typical of what goes on out there at 1:30 in the morning. People screaming incoherently, lots of obscene epithets being hurled about. And two 911 calls were needed to, to get the situation addressed. And it's, it's really clear to me that, given the declining residential nature of that corner and the impact it's having on, on other people in the area, that the highest and best use for this corner is, is no longer single-family residential, that it's actually commercial. And if you look at 29th and Wanamaker, 29th and Fairlon, 21st and Fairlon, 21st and Wanamaker, all four of those corners have commercial structures on them. And it's interesting to note that all of the neighborhoods in those areas are actually neighborhoods with, where the homes have either maintained their values or are actually going up in value. The argument that this project may negatively affect values in the neighborhood, I think, is addressed and negated by the photos that I'm giving you, which show that what's already there.
Your time is up. Do you want to plead, or do we need additional time?
One more sentence.
One more sentence will allow.
The, the only thing I'd have to add to that is that the Planning Commission has already unanimously approved this project, and hopefully you will, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate that. Now, council members, we have an executive session. If Ms. Vaney would state, if, Ms. Vaney, if you would state the parameters for the executive session.
If, if someone would move to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss matters relating to employer-employee negotiations relative to the upcoming IAFF negotiations, and in order to assist the governing body, the body would request that the City Manager, Mr. Gerber, and the Deputy City Attorney, myself, be present. Someone could make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Delisla moves, and Mr. Schmidt seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
And this would be for 10 minutes?
That's correct.
Sorry, 10 minutes.
10 minutes. Missed that. I think she did say that. Nine having voted yes. I'm sorry. Now we have nine having voted yes. We will go into executive session when the hall is clear. The executive session has been completed with no action taken. There is one item that we do want to complete, and that is a review of the agenda for next week's session. If the clerk would review for us.
Okay, for next week, on the October 14th council agenda, we will have a presentation for the 2015 legislative agenda. For the action items, we will have four zoning cases. The first one will be the new Walgreens at Southwest 29th Street and Gage Boulevard. Then the second is in the 100 block of Northeast Lime Street. The third one is at 844 Northeast Quincy Street. And then we will have, the fourth will be in the 800 block of Northeast Monroe. And then we have the ordinance for the utility rates.
Thank you. There being no other business, the meeting is adjourned.